I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. Today is Thursday, June 2nd, 6:00 P.M. And may I ask Commissioner Allen to do the invitation and then we'll subsequently supply that. Thank you.
Our God in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this night together that we can come and discuss the things that have tainted this wonderful and beautiful city of ours that you blessed us with, the action of being with us and our judgment and wisdom and our decorum, would not listen tenderly to the things presented and make the best decision possible for the city and the citizens thereon. Ask you also to be in our country as we face difficult things in the few days to come, that you would do with our leaders and the rulers of our country, that they might also recognize your power and authority in that. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which is founded on a nation under God, in which there is peace, harmony, and love among all.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion for the Matthews Ministers. Someone might make a motion. Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Walton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, then the motion carries. Then we'll move straight on to public comment. Is there any public comments, please? Any public comments? Okay, then we're going to move straight into the commissioners' report. Commissioner Walton, do you have a report?
I have one.
Okay. Commissioner Mathis?
I have one.
Commissioner Allen?
None.
All right, I always have a report, so we'll just move straight to that. And I hope that all commissioners were able to read the letter of support and funding requested to the Tourist Development Council for the proposal of the Carabelle Airport fly-in event. That letter of support was in their agenda package. Did anyone get to see that? It's a fly-in event that's planned to be in conjunction with Camp Jordan Johnson Day's reunion parade. And it will have World War II aircraft on display, one, possibly two. There'll be scheduled for a parade flyover with a helicopter, helicopter rides at the airport, free airplane rides. Hopefully, the Young Eagles chapter can come in and do free airplane rides for children. Food vendors. There'll be a fly-in getaway contest for someone to, a pilot and guest, fly into the airport and stay a couple nights in a nearby hotel and have meals and go to maybe the museums or the lighthouse. So this is a proposal. It's being proposed to the TDC. It's, like I said, scheduled in conjunction with Camp Jordan Johnson Days to, you know, kind of give us a double thing for the buck and double, hopefully, we get double amount of visitors here to Carabelle area. It's intended for promotion of the Carabelle Airport and it's to help open up a new market for tourism, a new avenue of tourism in this area, in this side of the county. Usually on these types of events, pilots will bring in airshow planes or specialty planes just on coattails. They'll come in with their own, at their own expense. And so you have really a big show that doesn't cost a lot of money. And I just attended the, with, with, with Marianna Airport Fly-In, I made it 21st, and it was organized by the same event organizer, 783 Media, that's proposing to do this event at the Carabelle Airport. And that was a big success, and they had airplane helicopter rides and vendors and actually parachute, five parachutes dropped in, and they had quite a few fly-in demonstrations. But it was, it was funded by the city of Marianna and cost quite a bit. I just also want to make a note for interest, insurance on these types of events, these events are classified as fly-ins with demonstrations, and that makes insurance less expensive. If you, if you have an event, it's an airshow, then you get into some really costly insurance, which we're not, we're not going there. So do the commissioners have any, any questions on this proposal?
You, you mentioned, but I have a question. I'm going to have it from Marianna. It's on the 21st, it's, what's that, the third weekend of the month?
Right.
May was it?
Yes.
Okay. So we assume that would be the same time again?
For Marianna?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then I would like to entertain a motion in support of this event.
I don't have a motion.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis and a second by Commissioner Walton. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And then, under water suicide, last month, all five water towers underwent annual maintenance service with three towers receiving a complete washout and inspection, and the two remaining towers were inspected only. Next year, those two towers will be washed out and the three towers washed, that this year will be inspected. This is a $57,000 project, and it's required to be completed each and every year. So then I also want to talk to you all about the upcoming budget. And in anticipation of the 2016-17 budget workshops, I've completed a preliminary review on all the department year-to-date spending and budgets. And next week, Keisha and I will review all the budgets again formally in preparation for our budget workshops and hearings later this summer and then in September. I want to, while, among this topic, I just want to go ahead and advise everyone that I do not and will not hesitate spending and budgeting over and above the city's projected revenues. The general fund ran $108,000, $70,000 deficit this little year, '14, '15, and $35,000 deficit in '15 and '16. And the city, you know, can only continue for so long and chip away at its cash reserves before, you know, we're down to very low or nothing. And, you know, I have to ask myself, is this what we want? Current millage rate is nine, it's not sufficient to, and with that, that current rate, it's still not sufficient to support city operations resulting in a past deficit. The state will allow us to go up to 10 mills, and an additional one mill will bring in about $100,000 according to our property values. And do, you know, we have to ask ourselves, is this what we want? Do we want to go to 10 mills? I have a list of approximately 30 projects that people have requested and continue to persist and request, and I'm going to just present that budget, that list at the budget workshop, just, just for your review. But even with raising the millage rate up to 10, funding and sustaining any of these projects would be close to impossible unless we continue to operate in a deficit. Yesterday, the clerk received a good faith estimate from the property appraiser, and it was reported that the city, last year, the city's final property values were $98,262,941. And the estimate for this, this year is right at $99 million even. So, so far, we're, we're still, if we continue at the same millage rate, we'll have the same revenues basically as we had last year. So I'm just providing you this comment as a heads-up and food for thought as we approach the budget season. And then, a couple of months ago, I requested written staff reports to be submitted on the morning or the afternoon at the latest of the commission meeting. And so as not to blindside the commissioners and to help streamline our, our staff reports. But we're still not receiving all the reports in advance of the meeting, and if there's anything I can do or staff can do to assist, to help get these reports out, you know, at least by the afternoon, so that all the board members have an opportunity to review, please let us know. And then we'll not meet again until July 7th. And I want to wish everyone a happy 4th of July in advance and remind you all of the fireworks in Carabelle on Monday evening, July 4th and dark 30th. And that's all for me. So we'll move to staff reports and innovation.
All right, thank you. To update you on our projects, the CBG grant cycle for this, for this year, there were, there were two projects submitted to the state for funding within the same category. And it's, it's expected that the Avenue B project would, will be funded, that's not certain at this time. But the state actually called today and is scheduling a site visit on June 16th, so that's a very good sign. Secondly, on the Fifth Avenue depression, plans and specifications were sent to three contractors, PB and Sun, North Florida Asphalt and CW Roberts, and those bids are due in next week. Thirdly, the DOT Small Communities Outreach Grant Program is expected to announce grant funding in August of 2016, so we'll also monitor that. And lastly, the Fourth Street Pedestrian Crossing, we had some discussions with Mike Lee, who's reviewing that, and he indicated that a response would be forthcoming shortly on that. And we do have a letter from the mayor in support of the project that we're submitting to him as well.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question?
Question, no, it's not sure, but easy to. Do you have any idea or any information about the Marine Street, if you may?
I have not heard anything.
Everybody's asking you all the time. Not everybody, well, many people.
I see.
Also, do you think the city administrator could answer that question? We'll ask her that and her, or do you want to ask him now?
I don't have a date, but I know that they're finishing up with the drainage issue down at the pharmacy, and they decided not, well, we couldn't really get the permitting to put the drain in right there. So what they're going to do is take out the planer and reroute the water, but that's coming to a close, so it should be sometime soon.
Does anyone have any more questions for Mr. Large? Okay, and I just wanted to make sure, so that everyone understands, the number three, the Small Communities Outreach Municipalities Grant, we went ahead and submitted a grant for the KEO's Landing and Stormwater and Roadway Improvements.
That's right.
Okay. All right, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I thank you for communicating about the crosswalk as well. Thank you. Okay, and Waterfront Partnership?
Good evening. I handed out your Waterfront Partnership Report for the month. Basically, it's an update on all the projects that we've currently been doing, the one, the Brownfield project for the old water, water plant, which has been delayed since January for no reason that I can determine, except that staff changes have happened at DEP. They, I know they were having difficulty finding an engineering firm that was certified to handle and dispose of contaminated earth. And so that has been a problem, finding someone that's qualified to do that. That's, well, this is a tiny little job compared to a lot of them around the state. So apparently, they've had more trouble than they anticipated. And, but they did promise to continue to give us two weeks' notice before they come in and start doing even. We've just been pushing them because we wanted to try to take advantage of the asbestos and lead abatement funds at the Tallahassee Regional Grant that they have, that we've talked about before. But it runs out in June and, not June, oh, September. I put June, but it's September because it's a federal program. And so we're just trying to hurry up and get the other one done so that we could proceed on that. And we expect, soon as we get a signed contract with the Department of Historic Preservation, we'll be starting on the renovations for Phase 3 of Old City Hall, which is the egress stairs and upstairs egress. And we have been notified that they received our funding and met all the criteria for the grant we submitted a few months ago, well, actually, six weeks ago. And it, but we are exploring the possibility of applying for another kind of historic preservation grant where we could actually get a larger amount of money at one time, like $350,000 to complete everything to be done to the building, including a regular elevator and all of the floors redone and the lighting and all the different things that we would love to do in one fell swoop instead of going at it $50,000 a year, which is, I mean, I hope to live long enough to get it penetrated is the right word going. But anyway, if we can work that out, I'll be back with, I'm sorry.
I said me too.
I, we'll, we'll come back with the reports on how we might do this. I've got a meeting tomorrow with the grant specialists to see if we have an option that we might exercise. And then the only other thing is we are continuing to follow up with the Coast Guard on the environmental spillage and so forth that happened related to the Anthony, to the shrimp boat that's at the old Ice House. You know, the Coast Guard's been following up with that, and the boat is continuing to fall apart, either by acts of nature or acts of vandals, we don't know which exactly. But the Coast Guard will be here tomorrow to look at it again and see if there's anything else they can do to remove potential damage to the water out of there. They don't have any funds or ability to remove derelict vessels. What little money there is in that is with FWC, and so far, our county has not come in that list of things that can use derelict funds. But we haven't given up on continuing to ask. So that's just a quick summary. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I just, do, is there a lot of contaminated earth? I don't believe there is.
There is a teeny bit, and that's really the problem. It's just, I mean, it's probably no more than just the space right here with the depth in the area, and it could be done, it doesn't require huge dump, mini dump trucks and all these things. It's just the fact that only certified licensed people who can manage and deal with contaminated earth. It's very, a very small amount, and I think that's why they're having trouble. The firms that do this want to go for the big jobs where they've got like a whole block of stuff, and this is a small thing. But I keep saying, you know, maybe we could find somebody, but they say no, they have to be certified, and they've got the list of the certified vendors and all that.
Okay, and then they, they know, they have Courtney's contact information?
They do, yes.
Two weeks in advance?
Yes, and, and I, and I call them on a regular basis and try to get them to get, move on with it as quickly. We've been waiting, this has been an astronomical amount of time compared to the way things usually go with the state.
On the Carabelle, or the Old City Hall, on the renovations, do, have any of those renovations in the past included new doors and windows, insulation, that type thing?
Not new doors. In fact, one of the things we need is new doors so that we can install alarm, an alarm system, a professional alarm system in there. But we have, the windows were done just a few years before they moved out of it. I forget exactly what year, I've got it written down, but no, the windows are not on the list. We have repaired the walls where they have, the building next door is wick into the walls and ruined one whole side of the building. And then when the roof leaked, it, we have walls upstairs that are ruined that we've got in the next request for money to do it. But there hasn't been.
Insulation. Is there anything ever done to help make the building energy efficient?
Well, you know, the building is surprisingly energy efficient because of the huge shape of those blocks, the concrete blocks that Mr. Justice made, and the way that he made them and mortared them with concrete and plastered them with concrete. They are fairly good insulation, but there hasn't been any formal insulation. But I mean, if there's a program that we could look at to see if they could do something like that. We, we definitely need the doors replaced because they're both, you've got light coming around the bottoms of them. They're not the proper doors to be where they are, and they're easy to break into, and they're easy, the bugs just walk in. The cats are still staying out, but the bugs are walking in.
And then on the Coast Guard visit, site visit tomorrow, what time are they going to do?
He didn't tell me. He said in the morning.
Okay, so who, is anyone from staff going to meet?
I asked him if, if we were going, if they were going to meet with city at all, and he said no, they were, they're trying to get in touch with Dr. Zanala about some aspect of it. And I told him I thought that the bank was really the better, I gave him Dr. Zanala's contact information, but I, I don't think, as I remember, the last time you checked into it, the bank is actually the official owner of the, it was one of those confusing things where there's three lanes on the property and the bank has it and Dr. Zanala has it as well. Is that right?
That's right. And, and the bank is involved.
But there are barrels of used oil in the building. And they're looking at that and whether, I encourage them while they're getting the oil and the batteries out of any boats that are there, if they have a way of removing used oil that's in barrels in the building. I don't know where that came from, but it's been put there since it was condemned. And I know that there are children, I, I'm often concerned about the children that maraud up and down the street and like to go in there and shoot off fireworks and makes great noises and pumps of smoke. It looks like, it looks terrible, I don't know. But I know the police are keeping an eye on them as well.
Okay. Are there any more questions?
I just have a question.
Okay, we have questions.
My name's Selena Booth and I live at 1405 Owens Avenue, and I would like to know what makes our ground contaminated. I do have, I have found trucks and a tractor buried in my backyard, and I have oil and antifreeze oozing up from my ground when my area becomes wet. And I've done all the cleanup I can do by hand, and I wasn't sure if it's something that I need to report to the EPA, but it was a dumping ground of oil and batteries and vehicles just right in my backyard, a whole lot of it. And I don't know if, if there's any help to clean up the area, because I would like my area to be clean, and know that the water that sprays on my house is not contaminated? No, it isn't.
Okay, would you please stay right, okay.
Okay. But I didn't know if that is considered something for cleanup or not.
The state has a program called Brownfield Cleanup, but I don't, I've never heard of it applying to private property, although it does apply like to an old dry cleaner site and those kinds of things. But I can certainly give you.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure if it was a landfill.
It's the Department of Environmental Protection in Florida. They have a program called Brown, the Brownfield Program. But you can, you have computer access?
Well, I don't as of right now because my comp, my bill is not paid due to lack of work and that, and I just, I found out I'm free of cancer.
Okay, so after the meeting or so.
Okay, I'll get, I'm glad to get that information for you.
I thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Hammer. Okay. Next, we have the EDC. Do you have anything, Mr. Butler?
The only activity that I've had is, from my standpoint, is the EFI, you know, Enterprise Florida, is trying to do more to promote the rural Florida, helping economically. As you know, there's been a big checkup in DOE as far as money funding to help an area, so this is another counterbalance to that. They're looking for some activity to come in and take a photograph of that would show what kind of businesses are going on here or activity. And I've sent that out to the EDC folks and to commissioners and the chamber. And the only one that I've talked with, Ms. McCleary, who's redone the mini mall, and I sent an email up to the Opportunity Florida and told them that if they're looking for activity in a, in a place that really haven't recovered yet, where people are coming in with money and doing what's called rural, urban renovation, you know, as a business person, no grants, whatever, they're just coming in and fixing it up on the hope and prayer that businesses, you know, will come in and whatever. And Mr. McCleary wasn't sure what the photographs would be used for, and I, and they have not told me exactly how, but I'm just trying to get permission for him to, and I say this in the meeting, because if we know what anybody else, I mean, if you're actually creating jobs and producing something, they would like to come and get your stories so they could talk about very rural Florida and what we're trying to do.
Does anyone know of any other business in the area that's working and improving on their own? As you were just talking, I thought of another one, it's the Carabelle Marina. They, they've done all of their rehab on their own.
And the paddle sports, forgotten Coast paddle sports is another one that somebody's moved from another more populated area and come to this rural part and bringing their expertise and ability to do stuff. You've got to get somebody willing to step forward, but people are apprehensive about where is it going to really go to? That's it.
Okay, thank you. And then the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board.
Good evening. Did you all get the monthly report?
Yes, I, we did. Circulated everyone.
The only thing I forgot to put on there is we had a siren adapter installed at the gate today. It'll allow all the emergency vehicles access to the airport by pulling up to the gate, signing their, yelping the siren and opening the gate, so there won't be a necessity for keys and making sure that each police officer or ENT fire department has a key, they just have to sign the, sound the alarm, the siren. Any questions about the report?
I just, who, you say on the new hangar project, who will be the engineer on that project?
Jacob Jack.
Okay. And then we're also, you mentioned here the pavement improvement project, and that's regarding the resolution that we're going to be discussing later, the JPA resolution. And does anyone have any, any other questions for Mr. Sullivan? Okay, and I wanted to thank you for making the trip to see Mr. Phillips' deal at the DOT at your own expense and on your own time. Was that to Jipley or?
That was to Tri County Airport. It worked out to be very good, too, because we're having problems with this, the hangar renovation project, the cost overrun, and he was able to find some more money for it. So we're trying to work between the engineering and construction company and the DOT to, to see if we can complete the project as we had it drawn up.
That's very good. I mean, oftentimes, it takes going to meet with these folks that hold purse strings to let them know that we're really serious about our projects that we're working towards, and, and then they'll, they'll tend to offer some support, is what I understand.
Also, I wanted to make sure that Joe got the letter for the Aviation Board wrote to promote the fly-in.
That was circulated, and excuse me for not mentioning that, I actually have it in my notes here. And did you all get your, get the memo from, from the Aviation Board to see that in support of the fly-in event?
Yes.
Can you see that? Okay.
Do you have an estimate of when they're moving the, the hangar?
I don't, the, the engineer's drawing up the documents right now that will specify when it has to begin, and he's thinking the 30 to 60-day maximum. He was talking to Ram Construction today, so I might have an answer by tomorrow. He said that, you know, normally they're anxious to get started because this has been an ongoing process, and they've got the subcontractors that circulate now, and they want to get them to work before they.
That's very critical, seriously.
Yes, it is very critical here.
Once a one gets going, they'll probably just all start at once.
It probably will. And it's going to be real, really disruptive for a few months, but it'll all be done. Yes, it is very critical.
Once a one gets going, they'll probably just all start at once.
If they will. And it's gonna be real, really disruptive for a few months, but it'll all be done at once, including the new hangar hopefully. And this last Memorial Day weekend, as I put in here, it was the busiest I've ever seen it at the airport. And they were having a park on the grass. So even by word of mouth, the airport's getting well-known.
I have one other question. This perimeter fence, what type of fence will that be? Is it up with the?
Haven't, haven't even looked at it yet. I just know that the money's available. And so it'll start July next year is when it will become available. So we'll start planning for it during the year.
The highest fence there are now, years can jump over and bears can apparently go through.
Yeah, yeah. There's, and someone had called me about, there's something that they can put under the fence so they can't get under it. And then we could put constantine wire or something on top of it. But we haven't really looked at it.
I think I see here the Carabelle, I've actually visited it, Carabelle Airport has Facebook page and Twitter account. So you all take a, take a look at that and you'll have updates on there.
Yeah, it's just, it just came up in last week. So we'll, we'll have the website hopefully by the end of next week.
Or a page.
A page on the website.
Page on mycarabelle.com. Just like we have our water sewer page and police department. Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for putting your report to us. Mr. Hartman?
I just have one item. All the commissioners, as well as RBD and the mail, should receive your Form 1 Financial Disclosures due July 1. If you have any questions, certainly feel them to me. If you need a copy, contact Pinky Jack or my supervisor, elections. But yeah, we just need to get those filled out and turned in.
Okay, then we did put on, on this agenda, the city hall relocation. But you, you have been in communication now with the school board attorney?
I have. Yeah, just trying to keep them kind of up to speed on, on our transition. Again, we don't have a set plan yet, but trying to get them some foresight or whatever on exactly how we are gonna be transitioning out of this, on the consequences.
And maybe possibly how they may help us transition.
Yeah. Report with them. I mean, they're still the least area, area here that we own. And just, they're kind of our partner in this moving forward also.
Thank you. Ms. Courtney, do you have a report for us?
I just wanted to report that we got the TFO survey of this property. I emailed it out to the ones of y'all that had an email, feeling any questions. I do have the big maps here in my office if y'all would come by and look at them. The elevation here right now is right at twelve, twelve foot, twelve point two, some places. I think we have a fifteen foot base flood elevation. So if we tear the building down and we decide to build on this property, we have to be up three foot. Just my understanding that a two foot is standard. So you'd have to have a two foot anyway. So you're not really having to build up to two.
Does anyone have questions for Courtney on this issue? Then I just wanted to mention too that Courtney reminded me today that Keisha said, and I forget it sometimes, that FEMA flood zone regulations allow for only fifty percent improvement of a building that's in a flood zone. So that would apply to this, to this building, fifty percent of the building values. And so I believe that, you know, once we understand all of our obligations and now we understand how high we have to go, two and a half to three feet, I think, you know, we can move forward. On the city hall relocation, we really need to develop a strategic plan. We need to know exactly how we're going to do this, where, what the project, get a good idea of what the project will cost. We need a funding source. We probably are gonna need an architect or an engineer to assist with the plan. I wouldn't say probably, we will. And I just wanna go ahead and alert you that the administrative utility costs on this building for the first eight months of this fiscal year was forty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. We still have four months to go. So that's, that's all. We did have the, Courtney did participate in the surplus vehicle equipment sale. How did that go? Got rid of all the old vehicles and equipment. Okay, very good. All right then, Ms. Keisha, do you have a report for us?
I've been in contact with a fire department down in Naples. And they're part of, I can't get the name of it, it's been recent, but they, they bike for fallen police officers and stuff. And there's thirty-five of them and they're gonna start in Naples and go to Fort Walton. And they've chosen Carabelle as one of their stops for the night. And they go to New York. I mean, they go to, so it's really world renowned, you know. So they will be here on May the twenty-seventh. And they would like to, they get in about four. They would like to have everyone kind of meet them here and do a press release, meet the commissioners, meet everybody else. Anybody that was an EMT, firefighter, police officer. They're actually, this year is honoring the one from Ocalusa County. They try and do it within a year so that it's not forgotten. So that'll be May the twenty-seventh. I don't have all the details yet, I mean June twenty-seventh. I don't have all the details yet, but we are in contact.
If you'll just email that.
And they'll, they'll need dinner and breakfast for that night. And the next morning, they rely on the communities to kind of come together and do it for them so that all the money they raise can go towards the family of the fallen.
Where, where will they spend the night?
They're actually gonna be staying in the lunchroom back here. They camp out pretty much. And they usually go to fire departments or Elks lodges, but our fire department doesn't have air conditioning. So we're gonna let them camp out in here. So if y'all know anybody that can get, get together and plan a breakfast or dinner or some, you know, businesses that wanna donate. There's thirty-five signed up to ride, but they always have more. And what they'll do is they'll have, they'll have the police escort them in, police and fire trucks. So it'll be kind of a big deal coming through town. And like I said, they'll meet here and then they'll, anybody can get up with me if you might help.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have questions for, Ms. Keisha?
Something that, when flood's coming, I personally, there is a weather system out in Carabelle. If I'm headed this way, it could be two to three inches of flooding in the area. So it's completely unrelated, except that when you said flood zone, I thought that.
All right, well, thank you. And then we'll go, we'll move to the public hearing and the resolution, zero eight two zero one six. Will Mr. Hartman read that for us, please?
City of Carabelle Resolution oh eight dash twenty sixteen. Resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, provide a hundred percent grant funding to construct parking apron, provide additional aircraft parking and access to planned hangars and fuel farm, and mitigate deficiencies in the annual inspection report for state airport licensing. Whereas the City of Carabelle needs a hundred percent grant funding to construct parking apron to provide additional aircraft parking and access to planned hangars and fuel farm, and mitigate deficiencies in the annual inspection report for state airport license. And whereas this Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation, provide a hundred percent of the funding to make continued improvements to the Carabelle Thompson Airport. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission, the City of Carabelle, Florida, assembled in regular meeting on June second, twenty sixteen, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate and execute a joint participation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows. Florida Department of Transportation, participation one hundred percent, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. City of Carabelle participation zero percent. Total project cost for relocation of the fuel farm, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Be it resolved further, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be attached to the joint participation agreement between the City of Carabelle and Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed, adopted by the Carabelle City Commission on this second day of June twenty sixteen.
All right, are there any questions for the attorney regarding this resolution? Maybe an anti-motion then to regarding the resolution, joint participation agreement with the DOT and the City of Carabelle?
I'll move to approve.
You have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Walden. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the motion carries. Thank you. All right, then old business. Discussion and possible action concerning the noise ordinance. And did everyone review the draft noise ordinance that was circulated by the attorney? Do we have any questions or comments?
I think it's time to put this thing to bed.
Okay, how long have we been going? Since January or February?
Yeah, I don't need to push this thing.
We do. Then I did have one little thing. I think I mentioned it to, I think there's a possibly a typographical, okay.
Looks like Courtney corrected those in the, maybe they're corrected and copied and attached.
Okay, okay, corrected. How should that read?
Actually, which, I'll look for that.
It was on page eight. Page eight, which says ambient noise sound level, a secondary grade.
Of the, I have a suggestion, of the complaint of noise disturbance, of the complaint of noise disturbance.
Okay, complaint of, okay, maybe I'm having a hard.
No, no, I, I, to be frank, first I'm just, I think that is correct.
Okay, okay, all right then. And it's pretty much what we, we agree to, what members of the public agree to. And they're, they're pre-workshop workshop. It's what we agreed to at the last commission meeting. So if there's no more questions, then would you like to have a motion on that?
Actually, there, there, no need for motion. I can, what I can do is get, take another sweep through it, bring it back in front of you, we'll bring it back to the commission for first reading, next meeting. And even then, no actually, you can take it and then second reading.
All right, so, okay.
Move it to first reading.
First reading would be at the seventh meeting.
So we'll advertise that. Get all the advertising and everything that is done.
New business. Discussion and possible action concerning temporary permit served alcohol at the Big Ten Saltwater Classic.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mathis.
I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion? I will.
This is not gonna be on public ground.
Right, that's unprivate property. And, and we generally approve this every year. We've approved it every year since I've been on board.
Set the moorings.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner Allen. And that's all. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Item two, approve, disprove, allowing a lounge located at two thousand eight St. James Avenue, Sea Quarters Liquor and Lounge, and alcohol license to consume my premises, consume my premises.
It's two oh eight. It's the old Mama Joan pizza.
And do I, I think I heard, I don't know if this is true or not, but the owners are wanting to move their consumption license from the liquor buildings. It's not necessarily.
No, it won't be moving. It would just be a consumption for a lounge next door to their liquor store.
This is not within the five hundred foot restricted buffer zone.
It's in compliance with the ordinance.
Is there, is there a motion regarding this, request for an alcohol license?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen, a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item three, Ms. Selena Booth, as we looked at her already, she requested to be on the agenda to discuss the front of the.
Yes.
All right. And if I could, just before items three and four, this is directed to the commission, is there is, and it may not be exactly this, but as far as two matters on three and four that would bear on, there's an existing court proceeding going on. So I would recommend, I would strongly recommend as far as the commissioners, that we don't, no need to make any statements or anything regarding this. But obviously, the citizens have an opportunity and they're entitled to come up here and say their piece and kind of inform us. But because of the ongoing court proceedings, I don't think it's appropriate for the commissioners to comment on them.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Ms. Booth.
First, I'd like to say that I did open a business. I have a business which is kind of not in business right now. One I've been sick and another I spent sixteen hundred dollars getting into a location in the middle of town, across the street from the park, which was over top of me was a man who was selling drugs, Donny Davis, which he was, got in trouble three weeks later. But nonetheless, it didn't save my business. I have a lot of customers who were coming from out of town. They were staying in the RV parks. And I can't take the chance of my customers being followed home by people who do not work, who, who obviously, I'm not a big critic of how people look or how they dress. But I mean, it was quite obvious they were over there to buy and consume drugs. So my store was closed down and I have been battling cancer. So I've tried to stay motivated and tried to stay positive in my actions and in my home, trying to beat cancer and I finally have. Nonetheless, I would like to say that I would like to like my neighbors and I would like to like them back. And I would like to apologize for cutting down the azaleas that blocked my neighbor's view from my house. And he also came to my store when I first opened and asked me that, to tell me he did not want me in the neighborhood because I changed everything. I've cut down trees. I've cleaned up my property. I had asked the residents to please stop cutting down on my property line. That, that set them very much. They got a no trace passive warrant on me on my own property for finding my, my property line. So it just all boils down. And Ms. Mel Fisher, she said that Don Davis told her, I said, I was, she was gonna burn me out. No, ma'am, I did not. I told on his son for dealing drugs right down from, right above my business. So that's where this all starts. So right now, I would like, now that I am cancer-free and I do feel like working, I would like to ask for a special baronance to groom a few dogs from my house so I can at least enjoy having cable and having a telephone and just buying groceries. I do love a storefront. A business to me is twelve to sixteen dogs a day. Not one or two that I may come and make a little bit of money to keep my health insurance paid. Just your basic necessities in your home, which I find no different than having our yard sale store, Franklin County Yard Sale, which none of these people are permitted with a business license, having retail in their homes, selling from their homes. I enjoy the company of my dogs and, and to be in touch with my customers. It's all I know, it's all I have. I've worked at the same professions since I was nineteen years old. I don't have no friends here. I'm from Saint Odella where everybody was very friendly. And Apalachicola was very friendly. And I've never, ever been to a place that I've been treated so meanly and so unfairly. And I need to know how to go about asking for a special baronance just so I can maintain eating. And I did put a sign out in front of my house. It was very embarrassing that I would work for food, that I would groom dogs for food. But let me tell you what, I had more food than I've had in a long time. And how I beat cancer with everyone moving against me, just trying to stalk me out from working. And it doesn't have anything to do with more than azalea bushes, more than property being, you know, please stop cutting away my woods. Rita and Mike knew that I was battling cancer and I was in the bed. And I woke up and all of a sudden I could see their house. I'm like, please stop cutting away at my woods. And she jumped over the porch and, get off of my property. I mean, it's just, it all boils down to somebody is picking a bone with me. Because yeah, I have a little building there, but I mean, I haven't felt like, given any attempt that I've made to stay. I even put my house on the market. I put my house up for sale. Well, as soon as I put it up for sale and I came back, me and my dogs were gonna be homeless. I have a great day. I have a great dane, Willie, and then I have a three-legged shenanigans with Tommy, and they are my family. And I was going to have to get rid of both of them in order to stay in Atlanta. So, I came back here, I said, I saved up 15 years, just like everyone else here, to move to Caravel, Florida. I came through here 20 years ago, I fell in love with how friendly and how it was like coming home, how friendly everybody was and how down-to-earth, and it's not the people from Caravel who are trying to stomp me out, it's from people outside of Caravel because us original southern folks, we just, we know what it is to just get by. I mean, that's all I'm trying to do, and I haven't even done that, because I shouldn't even have a telephone. One of my customers must have paid my phone bill. I don't have cable TV, I don't have internet, so, I mean, how I'm running this big business over, I have, I don't know. My bank account, one's got $7 in it, the other one's got 27. All I'm asking is for the opportunity, now that I'm cancer-free and I would feel like working, to get the opportunity to make enough money to maybe I can, and, and by the way, I do not sell drugs. That's another rumor going around my neighborhood, and I don't sell drugs. I'm not the only one on that deed, and if I was, I would have lost my home. And no, I will not take someone taking over the payments, and we both know who that is. I'll pay up $38,000 more dollars on it. No, nobody can take over the payments. No, I'm not going to be forced out of my home. So, I'm just asking for, I mean, I don't bother anybody, and according to my covenants or whatever, covenants and rules and regulations, I'm the only one hardly in the neighborhood who's in compliance of the original covenants that was made by Rita and Mike. You guys have a building, I don't ask you what the noise is coming from your building at night time. I know it's automotive work. Nobody ever asks what you do in your building. I don't care, you're, that's your business. I mean, they've got a huge building on there, they got commercials out of the building on their property, I mean, but I don't care. But I'm just asking, can I groom a couple of dogs at home so I can eat and so I can pay my power bill? You know what I'm saying? It's not, I would like another business in town, but I just don't have the money right now. I've got two bald tires on my front, on my car. I've never known what it would like to be so poor, but I guess God has humbled me enough to get up here and beg you folks to please let me do a little bit of work at home without being chastised and punished for it. I mean, I have the right to protect my person, you know, I'm my person, I have a right to life and I have a right to liberty. And what you would call a business is somebody selling retail, I don't have anything for sale. All I knew was I grew, I grew up an abused child, and I turned to animals for comfort. And without the animals that have come to me for comfort, I don't know what comfort is. And I mean, I, I just, all I'm, I can't leave Carvel, I'm here. I renamed it right now, Calabelle, but I mean, I just don't want to live like that because I love Carvel, and I just would like the opportunity to be part of the community now that I feel like in the first year, I volunteered at the festival, we had the Riverfront Festival, I felt good, but I just want the opportunity to survive without being stomped out. Because I'm not moving, and I, I've even applied at the Dollar General, that, at Easy Serve, and I go to church, so I can't apply at the bars. So, I mean, so I just want instruction on what to do next. And I don't believe in getting food stamps. Yes, if I have to put a sign outside to keep from getting on food stamps, I will because I just don't believe in, I'm unable to have skills with these hands, and all my profession, all my profession needs is a pair of clippers and a pair of scissors and a water hose and some water, that's what I use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move to item four. Ms. Rita Preston requests to be on the agenda to discuss zoning violations and sun and sand subdivision.
Good evening.
Is it on?
Yep.
Oh, no, you'll turn it on.
Which I might have been.
No, we need it.
Is it on now?
Yes, it's on, you need to speak into.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have things to address here shortly, but I'm, I'm aware that there's a court and things can't be discussed, however. And I would not really address things that have just been said, however, it's on tape, it'll be on the website, people will see it, so the others that are here, they wish to address theirs, I know some of their issues, but it's not my place to. But we have not cut on anybody's property. We bought 20-foot of lot six, which was ours from Johnny Jackson. And I'll be honest, I do wish I'd bought all the huts there, but we are where we are. Haven't jumped over any porch or anything. The barn, pole barn we have was permitted years ago. It's a pole barn. There's no automotive going in there. There's no kind of business work. And anybody that feels they need to, or the, our Carvel police is more than welcome to come and check. So, and did I cover all those issues that were said? I don't know, I was kind of dumbfounded. I think I covered everything. Now, to what I was going to talk about, okay. We do have a problem, and I know, I'm only saying so you all are aware and know where we're coming from. I appreciate the, you know, city administrator, city clerk, the attorney, Derek Hennings and Jean Anderson, officer, you know, helping in this issue that we have here, and appreciate the ongoing and have every confidence in the city attorney to take care of the issue of zoning violation. Our area, sun and sands, is residential. We've been there 29 years. It's always been residential, it was residential before we got there. We didn't assign it residential, it was. We checked on what was supposed to be permitted, and we have conducted ourselves in that manner and a good measure. So, this is, this is where we are with this. Now, as in my understanding, that it is on its way to court and the process of enforcement, which we're very thankful for, it's been a little bit of a long process. One thing, and I don't know the attorney, you know, if they can answer, if, this is something that can be answered, I was wondering, how has the city, as a rule, handled zoning violations in the past? Or has there just been zoning violations and they've been notified and they comply? Is that generally how it's been?
The attorney will help us.
Yes, generally how it's been? Okay, and I was wondering, does the city have any ordinance, like the, you know, the trash ordinance, number 389, that, you know, has written things for violating zoning that, you know, would have penalties and, and things along the line like 8 and 13 in them?
I mean, just generally speaking, not specifically today.
Right, just general.
There are, and there, many of them are out of date, but you have some fine amounts, as well as typically, it's simply to fix the problem.
Okay.
Like, there is a zoning violation, bring them in, conform, into compliance, and typically that's adjunctive or will be applicable to leave from the court.
Well, this, I don't want ever to put, you know, the board, attorney, or any of the staff, I would try to be, I think they could say, not put them in any position or anything, but after this is settled through the courts and all, I would like it to be considered that maybe those things might be updated, that we would have some, you know, zoning ordinance that, for, I, I don't really, I don't really know of many people that, you know, don't comply. I mean, usually they're instructed or let know, and, and they comply with, you know, the ordinances or the zoning that, you know, is, is how it is in the city, so it's really kind of new to me, too. I worked in the building department, and we really have many, they were let know and then they complied, so. Anyway, I just think it is something that I would like to be for future, to, after this gets settled, like I said, to, to maybe be addressed and do something. So, that's, I, hopefully, we'll never have stuff like this again, but they're all over the city, you know. Everybody is concerned, they buy in residential or they buy in commercial, or they, you know, how do they buy what is allowed, and they put, you know, their livelihood and living and family, and that's how, you know, they really want it to be. They don't expect any more, but they don't expect any less. So, and I don't think any, anyone would really want any less than what they had, you know, planned on doing. Oh, I did forget, as far as the covenants or whatever, the thing she was talking about, we didn't draw those up, we just happened to live there with the other people who lived there and signed on that we agreed with those items for sun and sands. We didn't design them up, we didn't own all those properties. We only owned one, well, I'll say, two and a half, two and 20-foot of another lot, so. Also, I would really, you know, I wanted to make it clear, and, and this is for now and for what, I, I'm not in an agreement, and the board will know, and I think I could say that I'm not in agreement with any commercial in our residential, since we own the area. I mean, I bought and invested, my husband and I, neither one of us are, and I don't think others are, but you can, you know, speak with them and, and address them on what they're feeling, but other ones talk with residential. And not that I really need a reason, because residential is residential, it speaks for itself, but our world is not like it once was. And having a business, no matter what, it is not saying that they're bad people or people who go to the business are bad or whatever, but it does lead way for more opportunity for things to happen to children. I mean, they're not aware, that's why you have business zones and you have residential zones, that's one of the reasons. I mean, I got an amber alert on my phone today, so y'all may get those also. And, I mean, this is maybe a far-fetched scenario, but I seen it happen when I grew up. Someone come around saying that they were looking for Mrs. So-and-so or the pet place, and that child goes up to the car. I mean, all I got to say is amber alert. I mean, it is just, you can't be too careful. So, residential is residential, and business is business, as far as I'm concerned. So, I don't think I stepped on anything over I should have done.
Mr. Hartman, did I?
No.
Okay, so, that's how I stand. I'm, I'm not in favor or in agreement with any kind of business in our residential zone, which has been that way, like I said, for 29 years, and was like that way before we got there. And, thank you all.
Thank you.
Should I just leave this on or turn it off? Thank you, Ms. Preston. You're welcome. I thank you all very much for your time. Okay, item five, discussion and possible action concerning the Caravel Port and Airport Authority.
All right, this item is, is on the agenda because what we, what we've got, just a quick background, is in the mid-'80s, it was set up by the governor and the county ordinance, a Port and Airport Authority. The land that was placed in it was really Timber Island and the airport property, as far as kind of a regulatory body. Over it, I believe the genesis of it was the Timber Island Seafood Park, that was thought to be a DRI, it was thought that there was going to be a lot of activity out there. It did not materialize, and the airport and Port Authority just didn't get really any use and kind of fell into disuse. The, the reason it popped up recently is during the relicensure, renewal of the license for the airport, we've been discussing this back and forth with DEP staff, and I've been dealing with the DEP general counsel, DOT, sorry, not DEP, it's DOT, and what was going on there is that the city property, the airport property is owned by the city, and historically, the airport has been run by the city, the last 16, 18 years, that's how it's been owned and operated. And however, this Port and Airport Authority entity is out there, there have been recent new requirements that every Port and Airport Authority in the state have a website, just a lot of administrative requirements of it that will cost money and time, because it's a relatively large board, seven-person appointed board and all this, and what, why it's on the agenda is, one other historical fact is that back in '06, there was talk on the commission, the city commission, of dissolving the Port and Airport Authority. It just never, it was discussed, I don't believe a decision was ever made either way, but again, talking to DOT currently, essentially, we're being advised that, hey, we really need to do something, one way or the other, with, we either need to set it up and not set it up, but yes, set it up and move forward with it, or go ahead and dissolve it. So, and really, obviously, we have a number of advisory boards and, like the CRA, it's a dependent special district, this Port and Airport Authority is, but it is our kind of, would be an hassle, would be an expense and a hassle to the city to, you know, we're just, it's set up for a lot bigger operation than we have. So, just certainly ask questions. Mayor Piles has been very involved in it as well, and I'm sure has some thoughts on it, but certainly consider it and ask questions, but it's on the agenda, really, for, we've got to pick a course, we've got to either move ahead with it or simply ask it to be dissolved.
And, and as Mr. Hartman said, it is a dependent special district, similar, but actually more involved than, than the CRA, and we know how the CRA is involved, and it has state regulations and Department of Economic Opportunity guidelines, just like the CRA or any, any dependent district. And it's, it's, the authority's been inactive for numerous, numerous years, even back to 2000, a long time. It was enacted in 1986, economic plan, like the Timber, like you said, the Timber Island Seafood Park area, and it hasn't had any, the DGO requires that it has meetings and forums and every month, and, and that's not been conducted. There was misinterpretations and discrepancies with the last airport licensing process between the FAA and the DOT and the governor's appointment office and the DGO regarding, you know, who owns and operates the airport because of this Port and Airport Authority. And generally, an authority like that is established to manage large ports and airports with a large volume of important export shipping coming in and out of it. And an authority would manage like a major transportation infrastructure, which this, this community doesn't have. An authority, the members of the authority, they'll oversee and have jurisdiction in the district. This, this authority requires that the governor's office, appointment office appoint three of the members, and then the governing board would appoint four members. And the governor's office has said that it's inactive by default because there, first of all, you'd have to, we would have to select a nominating committee, or the governing body would select a nominating committee who would nominate members that would be submitted to the governor's office for appointment, then the governor's office would appoint. And generally, you know, sometimes it happens in an authority like this, you'll end up with members that are more self-serving, that, you know, really don't, they can be from somewhere else besides even Franklin County, and not serving in the community's best interest. There's no taxes or fees being collected, there's no money being collected with which to manage the district and to pay staff, like we, we collect increment revenues for the CRA. And actually, I understand that our economic trends now are really more towards ecotourism instead of major, and major industrial park-type development. So, and then I also want to say, I send, just like I send out a copy and an announcement and a copy of the agenda to a lot of folks, I also send that to Senator Munkford's office and- and to Representative Boucher's office every month, and they reviewed our agenda yesterday, and I received a note from Senator Monford's office yesterday saying they wanted to be here tonight for this discussion, but they have scheduling conflict, but Senator Monford has offered to assist in this process in any way. And it seems like if, if we go ahead and notify the DEO that they may help to start the dissolution process, if we're interested in that.
I think we ought to seriously consider this, this backing. Seems like we lose a lot of the city's economy by having to go through the district and supersede the authorities of the city and our own rule conference.
That is true.
So we need to make a decision on?
Yep. If you all, certainly, if that informs a motion, and.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Then staff and Madam Mayor, if you have any questions.
I'll second that motion. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, then we have a motion by Commissioner Allen to move forward with dissolution of the Caribou Port and Airport Authority.
Right.
Okay, and then we have a second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any more discussion? Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. And the last item is approval of the attorney invoices. Would someone like to make a motion on that?
I'd like to motion, we agree.
Okay, and would someone second that motion?
I second that motion.
Okay, and any discussion on approval of the attorney invoices? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and then we'll adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion by Commissioner Mathis, a second by Commissioner Walden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, good evening and happy fourth of July.